Good evening. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The zoning ordinance empowers us to hear references from the city council, petitions from other parties for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. We hear testimony from those in attendance and then make formal findings of fact based on the evidence presented, which consists of testimony and exhibits and on our knowledge of the community. We then either make a determination or recommendation to the city council. The testimony is taken under oath, although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence and procedures. We ask that you keep your testimony relevant to the proposal as it relates to the standards contained in the zoning ordinance. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record and print your name on the sign-in sheet provided outside the door. Each case will be introduced by staff and a list of documents will be read into the record. Then the applicant will give an explanation of the proposal. After that, those who wish to testify as either proponents or opponents of the case will have the chance to do so, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond. Any case not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next meeting. Melissa, can you please call the roll?
Mary McCauley.
Here.
Max Puchel.
Here.
Myrna Aravalo.
Here.
Viola Collin.
Jill Zorden.
Here.
Lisa Deacon.
Kirill Miranchov.
Here.
I will now swear you, anyone here who plans to give testimony on any of the cases scheduled for tonight, please raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will provide in connection with this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to start with our first case, 1031 Sherman Avenue. Melissa?
First, just to note on the agenda that there are no meeting minutes for approval for tonight. So moving on to 1031 Sherman Avenue, the case is scheduled to be continued to January 21st, 2020. It will likely be withdrawn, but it has not been at this time. So if we could have a motion in a second to continue it?
I move that we continue the case of 1031 Sherman Avenue to the January 21st, 2020 meeting.
Second?
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? So it's continued to January 21st, 2020. In regards to the case 1327 Chicago Avenue?
1327 Chicago Avenue and 528 Greenwood Street will also not be heard tonight. This case is also continued to January 21st, 2020, where we do expect that it will be heard that night. Do we have a motion?
Sure. I move that the case of 1327 Chicago Avenue, 528 Greenwood Street be continued to the January 21st, 2020 meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? So it's continued to January 21st, 2020. The case at 1224 Oak Avenue?
Donna Lee Floater, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct an attached garage, deck, and attic addition in the R3-2 family residential district and Ridge Historic District. The applicant requests a three-foot rear yard setback where 30 feet is required, zoning code section 6847; a 3.2-foot north interior side yard setback where five feet is required, zoning code section 6847A3; a one-foot south interior side yard setback for an accessory structure, deck, where five feet is required, zoning code sections 6847C3 and 6463; and building lot coverage of 51% where 45% is required, zoning code section 6846. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Additionally, from the packet, two letters of support were handed out to members of the zoning board at the beginning of the meeting. And also to clarify, there is an error in the staff memo at the bottom of page one. It's listed as a condition that there cannot be any basement excavation, and that is incorrect, and it was incorrect in the DAPR minutes. So to clarify for everyone, that was not a condition. It was more of a statement that through the permitting process, a sump pump would not be allowed to be below the water table. But that's all handled through the permit process anyway.
So just for clarifications, the DAPR did not want the basement excavated because they didn't want a sump pump located below the water table?
DAPR was fine with the basement excavation so long as the sump pump does not need to be below the water table.
I see. And so, and that will be a function of?
Of our regular permitting process.
Okay.
With that, if the applicants would like to present?
You were going to introduce? I'm Donna Lee Floater, the architect for the project. Just briefly to talk about, the building was always a two-flat, built in 1905.
1905.
As a two-flat, sited on a lot which is slightly less than 5,000 square feet. So the setbacks of the front and the rear were original to that building. What else do you want me to say?
Introduce.
Oh, this is Noreen Edwards Metz, one of the homeowners, and Mark, her husband, who are owners of the property and proposing the work. Because we have a lot to present, I don't want to go. Oh, one brief thing, Melissa's description of the project. During the process of going through historic preservation and DAPR, we did make some minor changes. So that rear yard setback is actually four instead of three, which sounds minor, but given the site, it was something. And the lot coverage is 50, not 51. So we tried to shrink it, given the constraints of construction for a garage.
Okay. Hey, so do comments come first? Or? Why don't you give an explanation of your overall proposal? And then if you, anyone who's in the audience who wants to speak for or against will get a chance to speak, and then you'll also get a chance to sum up or rebut after that. Okay. Okay. So, let's see if I can. There we are. Okay, we hope that 1224 Oak will be our home for a long time. And we want to downsize from our current home in Evanston, and so we want to make, we want to repair for that by planning for some accessibility. We are ecstatic that our daughter and her husband and her children will live on the first floor and be co-owners with us after we're all done with construction. We have to figure out how that, the legal stuff on that. And we also want to do as many green things as we can afford. And specifically, we're going to definitely do energy-efficient HVAC and new energy-efficient windows. And my son-in-law has an electric car, so he'll be able to charge that in the new garage. So you said 3.2? I'm not sure. I think it's 3.57?
Because it angles on a lot, where we're doing the addition, the setback is actually three and a half, but at the front of the building, it's 3.2.
So, anyway, that's on the north, and then four-feet rear yard setback, the 50-point whatever, building lot coverage, and then the side yard setback. So we want to add a small first-floor deck on the south side, and that's why there is that fourth variance. The first three variances are all due to the new garage.
Can I ask a real quick question? I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify this. So the current house is a legal non-conforming setback? Is that right?
Correct.
Of 3.7?
Correct.
From the north house?
Yes.
Okay.
Co-plainer. And it's also non-conforming in the rear. It's only 24 feet. There's only 24 feet between the building and the alley.
Right.
Which leads to the, how do we get a garage in? So that's why we're building an attached garage. So I just want to, I hopefully all of you read the memorandum, but I want to point out that staff recommends approval of our project. They believe it's in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance and the goals of the comprehensive plan. So I made slides for all the standards and all the intents and purposes of the zoning ordinance, but since staff recommended it and already went through a lot of the zoning standards, and preservation recommended the project, and DAPR recommended the project, I will only show you the slides where there are concerns that were discussed in the memorandum. So here's the front of our house. Pictures from the southeast and the northeast, and on the top right is the 3D that we had done. If I had a fancy pointer, I would point out. So the side deck, first of all, you can't see the dormers from the front. They're 32 feet behind the front of the building, and pretty small and setback.
There's no zoning issue with the attic addition or the dormers? That was compliant?
Yeah. So the deck on the south is, you can sort of see it in the picture there, down at the bottom. And then HVACs are compliant and also setback there. And then the garage. So, sorry, the bottom pictures show, the one at the bottom left, you can barely, this is from the park, so we are next door to the park, Larimer Park. And you can sort of see the chimney through there. That's all you can see from the park in the summertime. Even in the wintertime, there's Viburnums behind the basketball court there that will hide the deck and the HVAC, or the ACs over there, too. Here is the rear existing. So up at the top, you can see the existing deck on the second floor, and you can see there's already sliding glass doors on the second floor. So the new garage, or the new deck, would be where the old deck is, just further out. And the screen porch would be kind of behind that mulberry tree right there. So first standard, does it have adverse impact on the neighbors, basically? So first, let me show you the brown outline is the existing deck. It goes back about 10 feet. The black rectangle on the top left is the existing gravel parking space. So the lot is only, like I said, 24 feet, a little longer right there, but the deck is 10 feet. So it's a short spot and not really adequate, anyway. The green is the new garage. The greenish-yellow is the new, the location of the new garage. The pale yellow to the left, well, first, let me say, the red line is the existing fence. And I went and found the hash marks in the alley, and it's encroaching on the alley about a foot. So the pale area is the area that will actually be given back to open space, because we will set the garage back four feet on the south, four feet in the middle, and at about seven feet on the north end. So this will create more circulation space in the alley for public use. So it will have a positive impact on the neighboring properties.
Can I ask you a question? It was one of the concerns that DAPR voiced was, in terms of that specific standard, was the potential negative impact of the north wall of the house, all the way to the back, as that would affect the house immediately to your north. There was a suggestion in the meeting minutes that the current neighbor to the north does not take very good care of the property. I don't know, you know, I don't know how impactful that is. But, so maybe, Donna Lee, you can speak to this? The extension beyond the current existing house at three and a half feet from the north lot line, how much additional footage, how much additional space does the wall continue back in terms of, you know? Because there is a back, how many feet?
Well, it's 24 feet.
Can you speak into them?
So 24 feet, so that?
Without a pointer, it's hard to say. Where the words "existing deck" are, that defines the building from the deck and what's currently gravel and patio.
Right.
Our proposed garage would start there and go 24 feet towards the alley.
Okay.
So because the lot, the back lot line angles, it's four feet to the corner, as measured in a 90-degree angle, four feet to the lower south corner, four feet where it indents, and then it's closer to seven feet at the top end.
Okay.
So because the lot line is longer on the north side than it is the south side.
Okay.
But the garage is 24 feet from the current back of the brick building to the end of the longest part of the garage.
Okay, so in, I'm trying to conceive of how that impacts the backyard.
I have more slides that will...
That will illustrate that a little more clearly? Okay.
So I spent a few hours working on a rendering of the rear. On the left, you can see the existing, it's a multi-unit building. I actually went through the microfiche. The current building to the left, to the north of us, is 38 feet tall by the alley. And there is that mulberry tree right there dividing them. The, we have, the screen porch is only about 10 feet wide, and those are screens, not windows, so it's less obtrusive than, say, a coach house would be. And then we have the open deck on the second floor that we'll, I'm planning on planting a tree on, and flowers, and tomatoes, and edibles. You can see on the right that we now have room for the garbage cans, and they won't be hanging out in the alley. And you can, I also drew in the basketball court. Right to the right of the garbage can, that sort of upright thing with vines on it now, is where the chain-link fence is that the city owns. So it's 11 feet high. I measured it. I've got some more alley pictures, so you can see. So currently, this is the hour fence on the right that encroaches about a foot, and then with all the greenery outside of it, it's sticking out there a good three feet into the alley. The fence across from us is stone and probably right on the lot line. So it doesn't get, I mean, there's certainly no room for passing in the alley by our garage. When we put in the new garage, like we said, it will go back four feet from the lot line and on the south, and in the middle, and on the north, it's back like seven feet from the lot line. So there are, these are all views from the alley. Two doors north of us is, the first top left is two doors. I'm not sure if this is a coach house, or if it's just storage space or something, but it's a tall garage. That is our next-door neighbor, with the 38-foot-tall, three-story addition on the rear of that building. And you can see they have open gravel parking all the way across, from edge to edge, and their garbage cans, I don't have a picture. Their garbage cans are frequently in the alley or in our parking area or whatever. Then there's another coach house on the alley, a two-story coach house on the south end, and this beautiful coach house on the north end, the red brick one, that's two and a half stories high on the alley. And then there's, the bottom right is one and a half whatever-story garage with asphalt parking space, but you can see there's no rear yard there. There are five other buildings on Oak, on our side of the alley. None of them are compliant with rear yard setback, none of them. And there are many other non-compliance issues. Our little, our addition will be a, uh-oh. So the garage is one story, and the screen porch, we also, per preservation suggestion, we, the screen porch roof was gable. We made it a hip roof and lowered the height of it. So now it's only two feet nine inches high, the screen porch roof.
From the gutter line to the peak.
So it's, compared to two-story coach houses and lots of other things going on, I think this will be a graceful addition to the alley. So continuing on the first standard, but regarding the side yard setback, interior side yard setback, so they sometimes call it. Let me make sure I'm on track here. The one intent of the zoning ordinance is, quote, is to determine, quote, "the area of open spaces between and among the surrounding buildings." The south yard is not interior in that it is not adjacent to another residence, nor is it adjacent to the street. It's not between and among surrounding buildings. It's adjacent to the city park with the 11-foot chain-link fence on the property line and the full-court basketball court about 15 feet from the property line. So I question whether or not this one is actually a variance, given the strict reading of the regulation. But in any case, having living space next to the park will have a positive impact on safety in the park, since residents will at times be on the deck. Currently, there is a little hidden area between the bushes and the fence in the park where kids hang out. The only neighbor to come to one of our hearings was at preservation, and he commented after the meeting on illicit activity in the park. It is not a stretch to say that having a deck by the park with homeowners looking over the park, quote, "promotes the public health, safety, comfort, morals, convenience, general welfare of citizens." And that is also from the first provision of the intent of the zoning ordinance. So again, this is the view across the park. So our little deck on the, a foot and a half off the ground on the side would not affect So on to standard four. Well, you know, I'm going to back up one second. I'm sorry. We learned at preservation that there is a court ruling about whether city parks are part of the public way. Staff reported that the court said that they were not and could not be included in preservation definition of public space. So I wonder about this application of the code in our case, since our deck is not really interior or between or among surrounding buildings. Also, in reference to standard four, not having an outdoor living area would be a huge hardship for our daughter and her chef-husband and their children. So we ask you to let the proposed deck on the south side remain in the plan. So standard four asks about hardship or practical difficulty if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Regarding the garage addition, there is no solution that carries out the strict letter of the regulation. We are currently out of compliance, since we have only one short gravel parking space, and it's, and we're currently out of rear yard setback, or out of compliance with rear yard setback, because we only have 24 and a half feet. If we were to have three gravel parking spaces, which zoning says are 20 by 10 each, then we would still be out of compliance on building lot coverage and on rear yard setback, since there's only 24 and a half feet. And we would have no outdoor living space, no elevator option, and an ugly mess back there. So without the garage, neither unit is accessible, since the elevator would be in the garage. We don't have enough parking spaces. No parking spaces means sometimes walking for blocks to park the car. We have had to do that as we looked at the building. If we had open parking spaces, we'd have no backyard. And open parking spaces in winter is a non-starter for aging in place. These are hardships or practical difficulties. So standard six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person, by us. The property was platted by the city, zoning guidelines were made by the city, the building is currently out of compliance. We did not create that situation. There's no way to bring it into full zoning compliance. So have other alternatives been considered? So again, there is no alternative that meets the parking requirement and that doesn't violate other code requirements. Open parking has been suggested, but we would still be out of compliance with building lot coverage, and we would still have insufficient rear yard setback. Open parking, again, would eliminate outdoor living space for the whole building and eliminate the space for the elevator, which makes neither unit age-friendly.
Does your, does your current plan have an elevator, or that's just something that you're?
No, we have a place for the elevator in the corner of the garage. And honestly, that's why we, the one variance, the three and a half feet variance, is there because we can't scoot it over anymore because of where the bearing walls are, the foundation walls. So it kind of has to be right in that spot in the corner. Here's the drainage plan that DAPR requested, and we have done a soil boring. The soil is sandy and gravelly and very dry, so we should be good, but of course, we will have to hire a civil engineer and go through all that with the building department. So there was another letter, there were three letters from neighbors, but they didn't put them in the packet. So, a bonus for hopefully my last meeting. We, I'm a landscape designer and contractor. We would love to give trees for neighborhoods, or neighbors' enjoyment. Of course, we would meet with forestry, determine species and location, but I would be happy to plant three trees in Larimer Park.
I have a question. Just to be clear, it seems like there's a large, what I'm guessing is an oak tree in the back. Is that right?
No, I would never, I wouldn't have bought the building had it been an oak tree.
Oh, regardless of what it is?
It's a Norway, it's a Norway maple. Norways are invasive and obnoxious trees. And even, at the last meeting, Libby Hill and Leslie Shad were there testifying about the tree ordinance, and Leslie's first question is, what is that tree behind your building? I'm like, it's a Norway. She's like, okay, fine, it can go. That's the, that's the answer.
Thank you.
So, one last point, and this was, the age-in-place thing was brought up in the memorandum a number of times. Here are excerpts from the World Health Organization Age-Friendly Cities Project, which is a model used by our Commission on Aging. It suggests that public officials respect the decisions of aging people and anticipate and respond flexibly to age-related needs and support accessible housing and home safety So here, these are quotes from the memorandum that I... So here, these are quotes from the memorandum that I wanted to talk about. Two staff members, I don't know if, if, this might be too small for people to read, but two staff members raised concerns about the precedent-setting nature of the case and wished to clarify how the city defines aging in place. We don't necessarily disagree that there needs to be further discussion, um, but one of the comments was that aging in, in place should be related to existing property owners only, who without zoning relief could not continue to live in their home. Being forced to relocate during old age would certainly be a hardship. The commenter continued and said, "What it isn't, aging in place, isn't relocating during middle age and purchasing any property and building it out to their desire without respect to the zoning code." That's in your memorandum from, um, staff today. But additional staff disagreed, stating the intent of the property is in keeping with the zoning code and the comprehensive plan. Staff also noted a lack of multi-gen housing options, a lack, a lack of age in place options, and applauded the investment we will be making. But let's, uh, look at that statement in red again. He called us middle age. To be transparent, I am 61. My husband is 66. He is retired. I hope to retire soon. We now have three grandchildren. While I like to think of myself as middle age, most standards disagree. Most senior communities take people after age 55. Social Security starts at 62. Everyone agrees that anyone 65 or older is a senior. I represented the Levy Center and the National Senior Olympics in Albuquerque in June. But I also sustained a pretty bad concussion last December when I fell on the ice in the alley. I spent about two weeks recuperating. And one of us needs a new knee now. Would it be better to wait until we are decrepit or injured and then try to find a place to live that would work? I had, did anybody see the Sunday Tribune? So the big article on the real estate section said, "A Demand for Accessibility: Illness, Injury, and Aging Means Homes With Modifications Sought After But Hard to Find." They suggest, "Even if you're decades from retiring, the sooner you tackle projects, the likelier you will be able to stay in your home longer. If you wait until an accident or illness makes you unable to scale the stairs or navigate the bathroom, you won't have months to install fixes." So, there are just not many housing options in Evanston or many, or other cities for that matter, for seniors. It's actually an alarming national crisis. We have many friends our age who are moving to Florida, recently North Carolina, Arizona. There are just not many housing and options, housing options in Evanston for seniors. There are some expensive high-rises which have accessible units or senior living facilities, but that has never been our plan. We have always planned on staying in the community. There are very few single-family or multifamily units that are accessible. The, um, staff members suggested that we are building out the property to our desire without respect to the zoning code. We have gone through a long process and spent a lot of money to get here tonight. We spoke with zoning staff before we purchased the building in May. We have been paying our architect to work on our plans since then. We met with staff in September and subsequently revised our plans in order to come into compliance on several items. Then there were two meetings with preservation, which resulted in substantially reducing the size of the dormers, changing the pitch and height of the porch roof, making it less bulky. Then we had two meetings with DAPR and reduced the size of the garage to bare bones in order to decrease the building lot coverage. We paid another architect to produce three, 3D images that were acceptable to preservation. We have agreed to handle stormwater on-site, even though we are in, in compliance on impervious surface area, and have volunteered to plant three trees in the park. We have not disrespected the zoning code. We embrace the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive general plan and the green building ordinance. We love the architecture of our building and the friendly ambience of the neighborhood and we want to contribute to that. We are super excited about the possibility of sharing a building with our daughter's family for years to come, next to the basketball court and planting trees and flowers in the park and living in this wonderful neighborhood, in this special city that we have called home for almost 40 years now. So this is our adorable grandchildren, at Fountain Square, by the way. I debated about including this picture in a slide, worried that it may seem unprofessional or not to the point, but I think it is to the point. You make decisions that have hu, huge impact on people's lives on a very personal level, on how and where and with whom we live. Thank you for volunteering to make our city a better place and we hope that you agree that our project does that because we too want to make Evanston a better place.
Thank you. So I have one question. And again, I'm trying to, eh, I'm trying to, um, understand and, um, you know, appreciate the comments that were made at DAPR and why, you know, in both preservation and DAPR, they kind of throw the ball back in our court to say, "Is this, um, meeting the standards for the variance requested?" One of the items that DAPR had suggested is that you not put the deck in the side yard. Is there a reason that you couldn't just have a yard in that space?
Um, we, well, eh, you mean like grass lawn?
Yeah.
Yeah, but then, but then how do they grill? How do they have a table where they can sit outside and eat and, um, I mean, we, we want to provide a living space, not just for our daughter's family, but for any future tenant's family that they could have on the side of the building there.
I, I'm, eh, once again, one of the standards that we have to find, eh, is met, is that you are doing the, um, least deviation from the zoning ordinances as possible. And it's a little bit hard to say, you know, if, if they've made this recommendation, um, that, um, that to include it nonetheless is still the least deviation possible. So, again, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to understand how that round peg fits into that square hole. Eh, eh, you know, eh, people do barbecue on lawns and?
Eh, it wouldn't be, there's an 11-foot chain link fence and about 15-foot-high verberums on the south side of that fence and trees. Eh, you could not even grow lawn there. It would have to be some hardscape put on there in order to do anything. It would be a, just a muddy mess otherwise.
Okay. No, I, I appreciate that. I, I see the chain link fence and the basketball court as being one of the property's hardships, to be honest with you. The park on the other side of the street is open, um, but on that side of the street, it's, eh, that's not exactly a desirable to have an 11-foot chain link fence and a, um, basketball court that is heavily used, I might add.
We like basketball.
So, I'm just trying to clarify the reasoning behind your intention to keep the deck.
Eh, you know, it, it's because our, we're trying to provide a nice space for our, our daughter's family, but also just for any future tenants, um, outside living space on the first, for the first floor.
Just one more point of clarification. You, um, one of your, eh, greatest desires here is to age in place. And so your suggestion is now that if your daughter moves, that you and your husband will remain there and you will just rent the downstairs unit to someone else.
Well, our plan is, eh, she's excited.
Way down.
Yeah, no, we're, we're all hoping to be there for a long time. My daughter's already got dibs on the second floor for when we're gone, so. So yeah, we all plan on being there for a long time. That was, but, but, I mean, the zoning board, I mean, who knows what might happen? The zoning board has to do things that are good for the building and for the city in general. Even if we weren't living there, even if we weren't, eh, you know, eh, in our 60s, having accessible units is good for the city.
No, that, that.
And, and having, having outdoor living space for the first floor apartment, it makes it a more valuable property. It makes it a nicer property. We, eh, the zoning and preservation and everybody should be about, and, and, and the, and the general comprehensive plan is very clear on that we, we want to make nicer properties. So that's what, that's what we're trying to do.
Right. And that my, my last, um, observation and, and again, I, um, I do wish that we could have heard something from the neighbor to the north, but, um.
He lives in Northbrook. He doesn't live there, so.
Right. Well, I, I get that, but he might, y, you know, um, God forbid, be run over by a truck tomorrow and then someone else will buy the property and what will be impact of this, you know, large?
Just to go back to your question, this, our proposed garage starts beyond the end of his building, so it would just?
Right, beyond the end of his building, but it, but it, it nonetheless does it impact, is it adjacent then to the parking?
To the parking.
Okay.
Yeah, his building is setback probably five or six feet from our building.
Right. Got it, okay.
Could we go back to the photo of the neighboring, the rear of the neighboring building?
Trying to figure it out. Um, the top center is the neighbor.
So he does have some sort of yard to the south end of his property.
West.
South.
South is between, it's, his yard is gravel all the way through the lot line.
But beyond that, it looks like there may be a boat or something there?
That's garbage.
Well, I think there's high-level mattresses, things like that. Yeah, there's some growth, I mean, solid lawn. Not only is the growth method existing, though? I think so. I mean, you can just see weeds and whatever growing there.
It's only about five feet over there, five feet wide. And then there is, I'm pretty sure he's about 10 or 11 feet north of the property line.
I have a couple of questions if all of my colleagues are done. Why the decision that the parents will be on the second floor and the younger will be on the first?
Well, even.
Usually it's?
Right, but even, I mean, there's five or six steps up to the first floor.
That's correct, yeah. But at least you will not have the need for the elevator, at least for now.
Um, we, the, the current owner's apartment is the second floor. It's nicer than the first floor. Um, we, eh, you know, we have the sort of prerogative as the, the owners at this point to have the second floor apartment and our daughter is enthusiastically a part of this, but, um, has agreed to live on the first floor, but they're gonna do a really nice job of it.
Okay, so, so it's, it's a decision and you insist on having the second floor?
And actually, I'm Mark Mattson, Noreen's husband, co-owner. There's actually, Noreen's not recalling at the moment, eh, she's got a lot on her mind here, but there's a lot of discussion about that with Veronica and us. And one of the reasons is that we envision this outdoor deck, it's on the second floor, over the garage. It provides a screen porch and a nice-sized outdoor deck that is the outdoor living space for an aging in place unit, right? The other one, we envision a deck or a yard or something, whatever we can agree on, eh, on the side, but again, that's down a number of steps from a door on the south side of the first floor. So that, eh, the idea is, once, once we get up there potentially, if we become disabled or can't do the stairs, once we get up by elevator, we can, one floor living, including gracious and, and it's, eh, large enough outdoor space to really enjoy the outdoors without ever having to negotiate stairs. That's really was, was the throw point. The other thing, which is, eh, a minor point was noise of little feet above us.
I understand.
You know, we have twin two-year-olds, so you saw that make a lot of noise, so.
Okay.
They won't be two forever, but then they'll be teenagers, which, I'm not sure.
So, and one more question that is both a question and, eh, let's say, thinking, maybe Donna Lee can talk to us. So I see that you had revisions, but did you consider something more like in the thinking of the zoning ordinance? And I will hint about this. For instance, a two-car garage, one parking space, and only a deck on top of it, so that you reduce the zoning variances to only one, which is the distance between the alley and the garage?
I'm directed by what my clients asked to see.
I understand that, but was it discussed at some point of time?
Discussed and thought through because the code requires three parking spaces for two flat building, eh, because one of the cars is electric. The other two cars would be owned by aging people.
But is it, is it somehow a reasonable suggestion that you may think about two-car garage with one parking space and a deck on top of it, without the wall to the north? Just asking.
Um, because the location of the elevator needs to be at that north corner, given the location of existing doors, doorway to the basement, the size of the parking spaces as the lot line angles, that was the only place the elevator could be. And then given the size of the required parking spaces, that was the minimum size garage for three cars that we could do.
Well, eh, I will not go into details, you know, that we can discuss this forever.
Someone could do a two-car garage and a parking space.
But we would still have the same impervious surface area?
That's correct.
Right, no matter what, the impervious surfaces coverage would be the same.
Well, you can use the 20% deduction when you use permeable papers. And this will go okay, probably. Once again, I'm trying to reduce the number of variances and the number of things, so that I, we could.
Variance for impermeable surfaces, so.
Yes, I understand. But the building, the building coverage will be in the zoning ordinance requirements if you have only two-car garage. So, and then you will not have the north setback problem with the new three-car garage because you are actually extending a non-conformity. If you have only a parking space on the north side and two-car garage, then you will have only the, the variance for the distance to the area.
Yeah, the elevator goes there.
It would have, the space would have to be on the south side, not the north, because that's where that elevator has to go.
You still can have the elevator. Well, I will not discuss, this is too much detail, but there is, there are options that I'm a kind of inclined to suggest to you because it's really too many things that are requested now and we have debate on all of that. And I think that there are solutions that would be better for you without, even without, well, only one zoning variance. That's my opinion, once again, it's both a question and an opinion.
To clarify, um, if one of the parking spaces was an open parking space, then it, it would physically reduce the bulk on the lot, however, it would not necessarily reduce the building lot coverage. The zoning ordinance counts required pa, open parking spaces as building lot coverage.
Oh, that's right.
And regardless of whether there's permeable papers there or not. So it would still require a building lot coverage variation, but it, it would physically reduce the bulk.
Um, there, there are a couple of speakers if.
Sure.
If we should do that and then.
Are, are you guys pretty much done with your comments? You'll get a, another chance to rebut.
Yeah.
Yeah. You wanna hear our speakers?
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead. I guess if there's any.
Anybody who would like to speak in regards to this case?
Hello, good evening.
Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Veronica Francisco, and I live at 1580 Dewey Avenue in Evanston. I live and, live in and own a two-flat in the fifth ward with my husband and our twin two-year-olds, who you saw earlier. And we hope to live in and co-own the property in question. I'm a small business owner with an office a few blocks away on Davis Street. My mother also owns a small business in Evanston and has served on the environmental board. My father was on the District 202 School Board and the Parks and Recreation Board for 10 years apiece, and he now serves on the Board of the YMCA, where my children will attend preschool next fall. I tell you this to accentuate how deeply rooted we are in this community. We are not interested in flipping the property for profit, but are rather trying to create the type of multi-generational housing that will benefit my husband and me, our children, and my parents by allowing us to live together for many years. We will act as good stewards of the building. We will be involved in the neighborhood and the Evanston community at large. I hope you can see how important this project is to all of us and how the proposed variances can make it possible. Your vote of approval tonight would begin a new chapter of our lives. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Richard Gleason, and I live at 1213 Oak. And first of all, I don't know how you do this every week, every month. It's really great that you all take the time like this. I've known Mark and Noreen for a long time. I know how active they've been in Evanston affairs. And when I found out they were thinking of buying the house across the street from where my wife, Mary, and I have lived now for about 40 years, I, I was really delighted. I've talked to other neighbors on our block. They're excited about the possible improvements we're going to have to that house on the park. I did submit a letter, and I'm assuming it's there for you to look at, for whatever that's worth. I, I do have a lot of familiarity with that block. And as I explained in my letter, my great-grandfather, a man named Connor, and his brother, built the house we live in now. I don't think that house complied with anything of the current code. And when we've made some major changes to it about 20 years ago, you know, we came before the various committees and, and explained that. I understand the issues about distances between properties and the questions about using space less than the current code. But I, I, I think there's very few houses on that block, particularly if you, if you ever drive down the alley behind where the Metz's own the home. There are garages three and four feet maximum from, especially on the west side, from the west side of that alley that runs from Crane to Dumpster. None of those houses on that side of the alley, their addresses would be on Ridge, they're 40, 50 feet higher than the alley and higher than those garages. Some of them surely could not be in compliance with the, the code on the alley itself. I know that the space between our house at 1213 and the house right next door to us at 1217, that house at 1217 isn't even, wasn't originally part of the neighborhood. The whole house was moved there sometime around, I don't know if it was 1900 or even earlier. But there isn't even five feet between our two houses. And, you know, we were allowed to put up a deck on the back of our house. I, I just wanted to say something about the, the distance between the proposed deck or area for barbecue on the north side of the house and that basketball court. I'm old now, I'm 70, but I played on that court for about 30 years. And I can tell you, you can't even see the property on the other side of that fence. It's, there is some pretty thick vegetation there. I, I don't know how you could ever plant anything on their property on the other side of that fence, that anything that would actually grow. And it surely is not going to be an impediment to anybody using the park, that proposed deck on the side. You can barely even see the area where they want to put this deck in from anywhere, including looking west towards the front of their house. Me, Mary, and our other neighbors there, we're so happy somebody like the, the Metz's are going to be there. It can get loud at night, because, but not because kids are doing anything wrong. They like to use the basketball court, so sometimes after it's dark, you know, you'll have to call the, the police, ask them to just, you know, ask the kids to leave or whatever. But I, I just can't think of a better family and a, a better plan for that particular structure. I know you were asking about the garage and the size of the garage. Again, if you drive down that alley, there is nothing back there for the house next to them, nothing. If there is some growth going on, it's just because no one's ever paid any attention to it. And if, if you look at some of those other garages on either side of the alley, I, I just, I don't see where, since it's already a not conforming space, was there before the ordinances were passed? I just don't see how that affects that person's living space there, where they want their garage to come out to. So, all in all, I'd say, I think I mentioned this in my letter, we want to keep the, the, the appearance of the neighborhood, if it's in a historic district. My grandparents would be in hysterics if someone told them they lived in an historic district. Like I said, three or four feet probably between my house and, and our neighbor's house that, that had been my grandparents. And I hope you'll look with favor on the Metz's application. They're very, very careful people. They love this town. They've done so much work for, I know Mark has worked with respect to the pensions. I think it was the fire pensions, maybe the police pensions. He's been on the school board for years and years, and his daughter talked about the volunteer work he does now. I just think it would be a great improvement to our neighborhood. And thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you have any closing remarks, so that we can close the record?
Just a pointed of information, if I may. I, I sense that you're getting ready to take a vote. You know, I'd, I'd almost like to ask if we could have a straw poll, to see if, to see if we should, you know, withdraw and make changes and come back. In other words, I don't, we're in a position financially with this where a no vote is not something we can accept. You know, we got to find a way to get to a yes, right? So, I don't know if you do straw polls and kind of see where everybody's at that would help us gauge what we need to do before the vote?
Can I just ask you, Melissa, if they elected to, do we have the option as, as zoning board to say we, we can approve this with modification? And such modification to be written in as a condition of our approval, or?
You can, and if, if there's like one or two things like that, that may be the way to go. If it's a lot of things, you may end up conditioning it to where it's not actually feasible. You know, what you guys can do is close the record, have your discussion, and then we can reopen the record if you want to request a continuance or something, depending on what the discussion is. I think you'll have a better idea when there's some more discussion here.
Once we've had a chance to discuss among ourselves.
So, as long as you guys are okay with potentially reopening the record, we can go that route?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We're going to close the record. Thoughts, please? This is really a hard one, because, you know, we don't, we have to find that standards are met. I, for one, think that this is a good project. I think that, that this is more conforming with the general plan than it would be. It, it, what's, what's more important is that it conformed to the general plan or that it conformed to the letter of the standards, in terms of can you do less? We've had this situation before where is this the least deviation possible? And I have always wanted to add to that, is this the least deviation possible exercising good building practices? I, for one, really don't understand. It costs more to build a three-car garage than it does to build a two-car garage and maintain an off, an, an, a parking space. So, they're, they're extending their investment to a greater degree in this property to do what I think ultimately is the right thing. Why, why are you going, if you need to have an elevator in the north side, why are you going to just leave an open parking space in order to comply with the letter of the zoning ordinance to do the least deviation possible? The, with regard to the side yard setback, I walk by that park, you know, twice a week, every week. And truly, I see the park as being one of the hardships that make the, the deck a very feasible option. And, and it's true that in that little space where nothing would grow, I just don't see that removing the deck serves the community or this homeowner in any positive way. So, that's my feeling. I think that there, for my purposes, I think that I can find mitigating factors to say that the standards are adequately met here. Max?
Will you come back to me?
Sure. Joe?
Well, what I'm thinking, so, the things that I don't like, let's say, I will say it this way. I don't like the deck with the sunroom. I mean, I don't like the sunroom. The deck is okay. But the sunroom with this wall that extends on the north side, it is, it is too much. We have entitists in the general law, entitists in our zoning ordinance. We should not extend non-conformities. So, you have over there small side back, side setback, non-conforming, and we're extending it. So, this is a kind of against all the rules that we have on this zoning board. So, this is one of the first things that I would recommend to be removed. A deck above the garage, for me, it's okay. The three garages, I would prefer to be two and a parking space. This will remove at least the bulk. You have some other things. The deck on the ground floor, I would say I'm okay with that. And I'm not saying this just neglecting the zoning ordinance. Yes, I, I understand, you, you probably need it. So, I would say this, in my opinion, it's possible to pass. I would say that you will have practical difficulty with this deck because you have only one foot to the fence. You cannot pass even with a lawnmower over there. So, maybe you don't see it now, but we have to see it, and we have to advise you. So, if you want to reduce it a little bit, if, if you reduce it to conform to the zoning ordinance, you will be left with five feet of a deck. And because currently it's nine feet plus one to the fence. So, if you reduce it four feet, or you have the five feet to the fence, you'll have five feet of a deck. If it's enough, it's okay. If you think it's not enough, I'm okay to extend it further to the south. That's fine. I, I agree with the opinions of your neighbors. It's, it's a basketball court. Probably it will never be something different than a park or basketball court. So, that's fine. So, the things that are kind of a trouble me, it is the deck with the sunroom, not the deck itself, the sunroom, because it really, we're, we're thinking now, and I will explain a little bit, I, I may be too long in my explanation. But I heard your neighbor, and I have to tell you, I walked today the alley. So, your neighbor has one of the ugliest buildings in Evanston. It's a nightmare. I even don't know who allowed this building to be built. I mean, the extension of the building. It is something that I would not recommend anybody to look at. So, I, I would not say that currently it is, your extension will, will throw a shadow or will impede, whatever. Not now. But imagine that, let's say, 10 years from now, there is another owner. He wants to build something, to build something much better than this one. And then your new wall will be really a trouble for this new owner. That's why we, we think that we have to keep the intent of the zoning ordinance and not extend non-conformities. Some people are kind of laugh at me, but I usually say we have to think about 50 years ahead. And if we think about it, this may happen. Somebody may come, want to make a nice building, and you will have the whole south exposure covered and no sun to, to this new guy. So, these are the, the thoughts that I'm sharing now with, with everyone, the things that I don't like and the things that I think they may pass. So, after that, probably there will be a discussion after we open the record again. And I appreciate your wish to invest in this building and to make it better. Still, we have to think about many other things. These are my thoughts.
Joe?
Yeah, I, excuse me. Would, excuse me again, would echo a lot of what Carol said. I can take some of the variations requested and understand the need for them. But I do have a problem with the bulk at the rear of the site, in particular, that north wall along the property. I, notwithstanding the condition of the property to the north, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that that would change in the future. And that creation of that, you know, continuing that non-conforming setback that, that is existing in your building, continuing that down through the north property line, I just have a problem with that. At the ground floor, perhaps, you know, I could be from, you know, be comfortable with that. But the second story sunroom is what gives me the pause.
Just, just a comment. It, and, and I may be mistaken in this, but Carol, you, you can, you know, speak to this. It seems to me that one of the things that we have, that we as a board have approved many times is additions that do exactly that. They continue the non-conformance because they have to be on the same, the same plane, so to speak. So, I don't see if they're going to build a garage out that, that jogging in and altering the property line. That, that's, it seems to me that in many cases, that has been one of the areas where we have allowed it. And maybe that is only for additions up to sit on existing non-conforming walls. additions up to sit on existing non-conforming walls. But, um, I, I have seen cases here where, you know, if you're going to have a, an addition that it follows the same existing non-conformance. But again, I, I respect that your, I mean, I, I had some pause about the, the bulk of the second floor along the north, uh, property line as well. Um, but then if it's, um, you know, gravel parking lot adjacent to it, will that, what will that be in a future home? Would that most likely be parking? Would it be, I mean, so that is what gives me some pause about prohibiting, uh, what I think is, uh, again, a fairly reasonable addition. Um, but I do understand that it's not the least deviation possible.
Well, I will partially answer the question about the continuing a non-conformity. Yes, we had such decisions. Most of the cases, it was when a second floor was proposed and we agreed to continue on top of an existing wall mainly because of structural issues. So this is a kind of a practice that we have. And on the question, what could be on this gravel area, imagine that this is a coach house, for instance, in the future. It's very possible that somebody will build a coach house on this gravelled area. And actually the red building that is, um, first on the second row, I believe this was allowed as a coach house. Because it, it, it looked like it was made as a coach house. So you can see that it is a building that has windows and not only the, so, once again, it could be anything. The thing is still the bulk and why we continue a non-conformity, just.
Max?
Uh, I feel like most of the, uh, variance standards are met. There's a couple that still stand out to me as.
Can you turn on your microphone?
I was saying that I think that, uh, the majority of the variance standards, the criteria are, are clearly met. There are a couple to me that are still a little gray. Um, however, I'm, I'm compelled by the argument that there's not likely going to be another use for that space, uh, in the park in any time soon. And while I hear some of the long-term concerns, I overall am hearing kind of a larger good coming from this project than, 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 than bad. Um, so I'm, I'm leaning in favor.
Um, I'm also actually in favor of this project. Um, the, um, the deck issue, um, because you're gonna have the deck a little higher than ground level, you're cutting out the, the feel of, um, being, uh, enclosed on one side with that 11-foot chain link, chain link fence that you have. Um, yes, I do agree with Carol in regards to the sunroom. Um, but then again, that's where the elevator would be going. So how would you bring the elevator without actually bulking out that area regardless? Um, and then, I mean, right now, even if you bring out the, um, the garage area, um, towards the alley, um, there's really no other way to get, um, that. And if they're not conforming right now as it is, there's no difference between, um, bringing that bulk out and, um, and having just, you know, the one, uh, gravel parking space. So, uh, for me, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of the project. Um, I think there's, it was, um, well thought out. Um, and, um, you, you put a lot of effort into, um, the accessibility area, uh, for me. So, um, I can say as I'm in favor of the project. With that?
With that, it sounds by my calculation that we do not have four concurrent votes either way, which means a decision will not be reached tonight regardless. So you can continue on as is and have the vote, and then, uh, it would continue to the next meeting just for the, the two absent members to review the video and the minutes and then make their vote. The testimony would be closed. You wouldn't be able to say anything further. Or we could vote now to reopen the record and then we could leave it open to the next meeting, at which time, if you want, you can make revisions to things, or you can leave it as is, but you would have, at least then have the point to further discuss things.
I think that's a better option to leave it open, don't you think?
Well, no.
Okay, let's.
Can, can I speak or we need to reopen?
First, let's, it, does someone here want to make a motion to reopen the record? Is that the applicant can?
I move that we reopen the record in this case.
Yeah, it will be better. I, I would second.
So to, about the, uh, the side wall of the garage where you have concerns of the bulk as of the screen porch. So in order to have that, uh, elevator and accessibility, uh, from the rear of our house out onto the deck, uh, that garage is gonna be pretty tall. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a short garage or a normal garage. It's gonna be, I don't know, how many feet?
Uh, whatever.
14? 12 or 14 feet up, right, to the roof? To the flat roof, right? To where the deck would be. All right, so it's already kinda high, right, without the screen porch. Now, on top of that, if you're okay with the deck, you know, you're gonna have probably a 42-inch railing when you're that high. I don't know what the code is, but I wouldn't want any less than that. I'm kinda tall. I don't wanna feel like I'm gonna pitch over it. So now you're up another 42 inches. And the difference between that and then just going up on a screen porch, especially since that wall is gonna be full of screens where light will pass through, you know, it's not like looking at siding, you know, or a, a giant edifice. There'll be, you know, broken up, a, a whole series of screens that we could, we'll put on there that will, you know, let light through and that, you know, you can see through, uh, to the other side. So visually, I don't think that it's, you know, I wonder if you've considered that. And I'm just, for purposes of seeing if we can wrap this up tonight and get to a fourth vote, I'm wondering if one of you could see your way clear to kind of reimagine that a little bit. And if it would help, we can put pictures up of that elevation to show you what that looks like.
Yeah, I didn't include the elevations I could. Another point, we're still over, if you have a parking space, we would still be over, well, it, we would still be over building lot coverage. So that doesn't erase that variance. Um, and somebody, you suggested maybe a coach house. There's not enough square feet and length of the lot for, I mean, they would have to have a teeny little house.
Oh, they'd be coming to you for a major.
And to have a, and, and to have a 30-foot your rear yard and a coach house there, that really is not a possibility for that lot.
I was suggesting if the building is not there, the principal building, and then you have a new building and the coach house.
Right, right. I get it.
You may have this.
But they would be teeny, and that's probably not.
I mean, I gotta have it.
And so, and the, so our garage, I mean, it's only 24 feet, so north of the garage would be parking. And so it's not like we would be changing, or it's not like we would be affecting, um, someone's living room or something.
Can we get to a fourth vote tonight? Or do we need to continue?
So the, um, do we know, I, I know that this is, um, do we know the size of the lot to the north here? I mean, I, I know that, you know, it, and Carol, you're right, you know, the zoning ordinances are designed so that we are not having to reinvent the wheel in, you know, 25 years from now or whatever. Um.
It's 126 feet long. You know that.
Mm-hmm.
It's the same as ours. And it's probably up 40 feet.
So it's, it's also an undersized lot.
Oh, yeah. They're all non-conforming right there.
Right.
No rear yard.
So, you know, any, any future building on this lot would, you know, they're, they tear down this abomination. If they're going to be in conformance, it's gonna be like the, the lot on Reese and North Evanston where you really couldn't put anything there. Um, so, you know, they will be governed by existing conditions at the time. Um, I just, I, I hate to preclude what to me looks like a very, um, good investment and, uh, much-needed improvement of a dilapidated property. Um, that it's an improvement to the neighborhood, it's, uh, it's living stock that is necessary in Evanston, multi-generational, uh, um, multifamily units that have accessibility. And, uh, and personally, I think that the, the garages are adding a public benefit because, um, again, in that whole dumpster area, and that's a short block that that ends into the park, uh, there's, parking on the street is very difficult. And, and then once you get to dumpster, you can't park. So, so I, I understand the need, particularly if you have a two-unit building and, um, I know, I understand the need for that additional parking. And covered parking is, in today's world, particularly with electric cars coming hopefully fast and furiously, uh, increasingly necessary.
Based on information, since we reopened the record, does anyone feel like their thoughts have changed? Okay, so given that it's, it's up to you guys, if you would like a vote now that probably will not be concluded tonight, or if you would like to request a continuance to keep testimony open, and, and until the next.
There would be more discussion at the next.
There, there could be if, if you want then, yeah. So you could come back with.
The other members that aren't here, I think that's better.
Yeah, and you could come back with a rendering showing what a railing would look like instead of a screen or anything else.
Yeah, let's do that. Yes.
We have a motion from anyone to continue to January 21st?
I move that we continue the case on 1224 Oak Street to the January 20th, 2020, January 21st, meeting 2020.
Which will be in room G300 in the basement. Uh, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your case is continued to, uh, January 21st, 2020. Now we're gonna hear the, uh, 2008 Harrison Street. Alyssa?
John Fell, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to permit use of a non-conforming dwelling unit in the R5 General Residential District and OCSC Central Street Corridor Overlay District. The owner requests providing four off-street parking spaces where seven are required, zoning code section 616-2, table 16B. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case.
Um, so my name is John Fell. I own, my wife and I own the building. It's a, a three-flat at 2008 Harrison. Um, we bought the building in, um, 2010. And at the time there was a, uh, fourth, we considered a fourth apartment, which we, um, it's sort of like a mother-in-law type of unit, which we actually remodeled and pulled a permit for in 2011. And then, uh, recently we found out that it was, uh, not a legal dwelling. And when I went to the, um, Building Department or the zoning to, uh, do what I would have to do to make it a legal dwelling, they told me that I did not currently have enough parking spaces, that I only provided four parking spaces, and based on them on bedrooms in the building, we would need seven. Um, to be honest with you, we really, by all practical purposes, have five parking spaces because there's a three-car garage, and next to it there's a driveway that, um, by the survey, um, only has 14 feet, but when you measure it, it's a little over 17. Um, regardless, we can easily park two cars there. So I, I consider it five parking spaces. But regardless of that, um, there's only four parking spaces that we use in the building, uh, between my wife and I and our tenants. And so whether or not you grant me this variance, nothing's gonna change. We're still only gonna park the four cars. The reason why we need to make this a legal dwelling is that should we have to remove it, um, it would be a, a major inconvenience to us. Um, we've used the apartment, uh, at various times for our, our children and, and our grandchild to come visit. And, uh, most recently, we've, we've been using it for, um, an adult child of ours who has special needs and probably, uh, has had difficulty, um, living on his own. Um, again, nothing would change. Um, if you give us this variance, we're not gonna build anything. We're not gonna park any more cars than we do. Um, as a matter of fact, I was told at the previous meeting I was at that had our address, had we'd been at 2004 Harrison, we would only need to provide four parking spaces. And truthfully, for our tenants, um, we're, you know, blocked from the Northwestern, and there's a bus right on Green Bay Road. So, you know, I don't, I, I don't really, you know, see a need for more parking spaces anyways for the future. But, um, that's the essence of, of, of why I, I would need this variance. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
So how long has the, the apartment been there?
Was there when we bought the building in 2010.
Okay.
So I, I gather that whoever, you know, when the, it was, it's, was put in and, you know, however it was put in, um, they didn't do it legally.
They didn't get the permits for it, right?
Ironically, we went in 2010 to do some remodeling and we, um, weren't told that it wasn't a legal dwelling. And if it, it couldn't have been, I probably would not have put it in, you know, uh, cause not, not realizing that we would have to take it out. But it, it's, it's a, it's, you know, it's one of those things that I feel like I kinda got caught for something that I had, yeah, I totally wanna legitimize. Um, I've had a couple of neighbors who've, I've asked them if they have any problem with this, and they wrote letters, which you probably have there, uh, um, you know, having no problem with it.
Anybody else?
So I, I walked there today, and you have, really this, this space in the back is for two cars. I would say, yes. I don't know where is the mistake, whether in the survey or you have, you can, you can park two cars over there. I, I can see that.
Well, on the, on the survey, I mean, maybe there, you know, I might have measured from the fence to the garage, but you literally, there's.
In practice, it is.
Yes, we park two cars.
You have a, a small problem with the garbage cans because they are on the way of the parking, the second vehicle. But I still believe you can put the two cars. I personally see the reason that you're applying for this variance. Uh, and frankly, I'm not so much concerned about that. It is, you have difficulties parking on the street. The street is usually busy with parked vehicles. But once again, for your type of purposes, frankly, I don't see a problem. But once again, for your type of purposes, frankly, I don't see a problem. That's my opinion.
Correct. And also, as you pointed out, you're a stone's throw away from a TOD area, which would require you to have only four parking spaces. So it seems as though this is kind of a slam dunk.
And you live in the building as well, is that correct?
Correct.
I read that. And you have one car?
My wife has a car, and I have a car. And we have a tenant in the second floor with a car and on the top floor with a car.
So you're currently using it as four spaces?
Right. And occasionally, we park five there, too, but there were never, I mean, we even have enough room that we could, if we needed to, pull behind, we could really park a lot of cars because you park in front of the garage. And it's a deep driveway, you could park two cars there, but we don't. You know, sometimes a delivery person or whatever will, a workman, because there's, we don't want them to park on the street, we'll have them park in our driveway during the day.
Max? Have you said everything?
I mean, if you have any questions, I'm not, you know, familiar with the processes here. No PowerPoint, but, and honestly, nothing changes, you know? I'm just trying to legitimize what should have been done 10 years ago.
Anybody else who would like to speak in this case? Thank you. Closing the record. Thoughts?
I don't see a problem with this. I'm for the variance.
Joe?
Yeah, I as well. I see this as a minor request, as you said, just kind of ticking the boxes of what should have been done in the past, and I don't see this having a negative impact.
Mary? Max? Yeah, I think that it's perfectly fine.
I don't object.
And neither do I. So can, so I move that in the case of 2008 Harrison Street, 19ZMJV-0095, that we recommend approval to City Council for this variance. We have to go through the variances.
Sorry, you have to go through the standards.
Oh, we do have to go, we have to read the standards first. Oh, sorry about that.
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Let me find them now. I can't. So for the ZBA to recommend approval of a variance, the ZBA must find that the proposed variance, A, will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property value of adjoining properties. The standard has been met. The subject property is existing and has rented the unit in question without complaint. The surrounding properties are a mix of single-family and multifamily residences with similar bulk and mass. Use of an existing dwelling unit near a TOD area and proximate to the Central Street Business District will benefit the neighborhood and local businesses. B, is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Standard has been met. The proposal promotes the objectives and policies of the Comprehensive General Plan and enhances the taxable value of the subject property. C, has a hardship or practical difficulty that is peculiar to the property. This standard has been met. The parcel was plotted and building constructed to their existing size prior to current ownership. The subject property has no practical way of complying with the code minimum parking requirement. D, property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. This standard has been met. The property owner would suffer hardship if the unit in question was not permitted for habitation, as no alternate use of the unit exists, and the owner has no means available to meet compliance. E, it is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property or public benefit to the whole will be derived. That standard has been met. The applicant intends to rent the subject property to a special-needs family member. Additional public benefit is derived by providing a range of housing choice in a location proximate to local business and rapid transit. The applicant has shown a willingness to make the apartment an affordable unit at such time that it is no longer needed for his family. F, does not have a hardship or practical difficulty that was created by the person having an interest in the property. This standard has been met. The size of the lot was plotted and the building and number of dwelling units constructed prior to current ownership. And G, it is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty. This standard has been met. The applicant has no viable location to provide additional open or enclosed parking on-site. Can I get a motion? I move, in the case of 2008 Harrison Street, 19ZMJV-0095, that we recommend approval to the City Council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? With that, we...
With that, you have a positive recommendation to City Council. We'll be in touch about what date that will be.
Now, with the case 1713 Central Street, Alyssa.
John Mauch, attorney, submits for a special use for a religious institution in the B1A Business District, zoning code section 6952, and the OCSC Central Street Corridor Overlay District, zoning code section 615147. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case.
Thank you. My name is John Mauch, representing the Second Church of Christ Scientist, and we're asking for approval of a special use permit, just a change of use. We're going to have, the building is going to have the same footprint that it currently has, so there won't be any new additions or extensions of the building. There'll be a change of use from a medical building for doctors, and they meet with their patients there, and that hasn't been working out. They've put it up for sale. And our use will be as a religious institution with a worship area in the rear of the building and a Christian bookstore and reading room in the front of the building. The building is located immediately to the east of the Arts Center, and I'm going to ask two people to testify, one of the treasurer of the Christian Science Church, Second Church, and the architect who's making the design plans. The standards for a special use, which I'm sure you're familiar with, focus on and reference the Comprehensive Plan. Now, the Comprehensive Plan does not specifically address houses of worship, but it has a more general category called institutions. And I'm going to read a couple of the general statements that they've, that the Comprehensive Plan contains concerning institutions, and then call the witnesses, and they'll help fill that in. From page seven of the Comprehensive Plan, it reads, "The guiding principle was and continues to be encouraging new development that improves the economy, convenience, and attractiveness of Evanston while simultaneously working to maintain a high quality of life in the community." You'll hear testimony about that. And then, on page 11, land use, in a reference that's more specifically to institutions, it states, "The growth and evolution of Evanston's institutions should be supported so long as the growth does not have an adverse impact upon the neighboring residentially-zoned adjacent neighborhoods." I'm not sure I read that correctly. "Adverse impact upon the residentially-zoned adjacent neighborhoods." The property is on Central Street, so it does not abut any residential neighborhoods, except perhaps in the back, behind in the alley. But the, there will not be that type of adverse impact because of the location of the use. So I'd like to ask Elizabeth Drake to come and speak. What's best, is for her to use this or to sit over here? What works for you?
If she can speak into the microphone, so anyone watching on camera...
Just right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your time this evening. I'm Elizabeth Drake. I'm the current treasurer of the Second Church of Christ Scientist in Evanston. And the, sort of, our little story is that we're looking, we're a church that's been in Evanston for over 70 years. Currently, our building on Heard Avenue is for sale, and we're looking to streamline, to maintain, easily maintain place of worship with no stairs, a parking lot, and a Christian bookstore on the street side. So we've identified 1713 as a building that would allow us to streamline two buildings into one. We own the Christian Science Reading Room on 1936 Central. Maybe some of you have seen that. It's very, you know, it's a glass-wrapped building, easily seen inside. It's open to the public. It's got a space for reading literature. You can come and read the Christian Science Monitor. You can look at books. It's for the public. And so we would be put, our look, where how we've been evolving as a church is seeing that we'd like to have an easier maintenance issue, to have one building, not two separate buildings, and to move the reading room from 1936 into the front, make the windows bigger, even put windows, a wall of glass, into the sanctuary so that it's clear what's going on in that building. We hope to bring to the building that area some diversity with the Christian bookstore and a place with its own parking lot in the back. We also would be getting a church sanctuary that would have public transportation nearby, no stairs, no elevators, and lower maintenance. Sound good enough? Do you have any questions?
All right, Gary Schumacher, architect. Would you tell us about yourself and tell the board about the plans?
My name is Gary Schumacher. I'm the architect who's been engaged by the church to perform both feasibility study and do some of the zoning analysis. I think we've, we've provided a few plans, which I think you've all seen in your packets already. We began working with the church early to determine whether or not this was a good fit for them. The Central Street Business District in this overlay is a good opportunity for this church. The benefit to the community is certainly the reading room. The access to it is free. It's also, it also remains a retail storefront. The books in there are for sale, if not just browsing. So what we've, what we've done is made the majority of the front glass entryway and glass display storefront. So this is also in keeping with the larger plan for Central Street and the development of the pedestrian scale and access along that. The church sanctuary, which we hold to the center of the building, will have large skylights, it'll be top lit, that'll be inviting. The idea that the church came to us with was to say we'd like an inviting space that folks will want to come in and learn more about what we do. There have been discussions about how the community would be able to use some of the community spaces in this. We're early in those discussions, but the multiple, the multiple uses of this building would be retail as well as the religious use. I think in your pocket, it's quite clear that the services here are one service on Sunday and one evening service on Wednesday. The bookstore is staffed by one staff member, whether it's a volunteer or a librarian by the church. They average about five customers or readers through the course of the day, so it is an active storefront. It's, we do see pedestrian traffic in and out of the building. We would expect, because of the density of residential apartments and the proximity to that, that there might be more traffic as the, as the reading room takes root, so. The, I think, as John mentioned, we're not planning to expand the footprint of this building. There's no reason to. We would provide, as we discussed with DAPR, we'd provide covered entrances in the rear, which don't currently exist, reconfigure a little bit of the parking in order to achieve a cleaner drop-off area. Some of the congregants will be, will be aging, and we want to make that an easier space for them to get in and out of. It is a single floor. There are no steps. It's conducive to being a doctor's office. It would be more conducive as a retail space and a sanctuary, we believe. We will, we will come back to DAPR and to the Appearance Review Committee to discuss alterations to the exterior. We do intend to open that storefront up, creating more glass, more views in and out of it, which would keep it more in line with the ideas behind the overlay district and the retail shopping districts.
What will be the business hours of the bookstore?
10 to 4. And they're Monday through Friday and Saturday. So largely in keeping with, with retail store hours?
What will be the maximum capacity of the, let's say, when we have service?
Right now, the congregation is about 40. We've designed a sanctuary that could accommodate up to 80. That would be a, that's aspirational. Most congregations are shrinking rather than growing.
You have, how many parking spaces?
There are currently 18 on the property.
How many employees are you going to have?
I don't believe there are any employees. Is that correct?
No, no full-time employees. There's a part-time bookkeeper or secretary.
There is one administrative office that is occupied a few hours a week, I think, bookkeeping and general administration, but a lot of the...
But you are selling books?
Yeah, but the bookstore will have one employee there during the day when the bookstore is open.
And where is that employee going to park?
There are 18 parking spaces in the, on the property currently.
Okay. So they will be using the parking that's already part of the building?
That's correct.
And when you have congregation, will that employee also be parking there?
I would assume that, it's generally a volunteer, if I'm not mistaken, so.
She is, she is also a member of the church.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question to staff. Is the parking calculated to the maximum amount of people on service? If they have 80 people, how will the parking result? Do you have any agreement with neighboring properties?
At this, at this point, the church is in negotiation to purchase the building, and we are seeking a special use allowance. We do need to come back through the process for zoning in order to determine exactly how much parking is required. It would be an occupancy issue, so it wouldn't necessarily be the, based on the number of congregants. It would be based on the square footage that would determine our required parking, and we haven't gotten that far yet.
So it will be a two-step zoning procedure?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Since it's an existing building, there is no new parking requirement. Whatever is there is, is there as far as the requirement goes. Whether that is enough parking on the property for the use is part of what the special use is for. And it might help if you clarify how much parking you have at your current location and how much is used during services.
Can you, can you step up to the microphone if you're going to speak?
Trying to think of how many. At Heard, there's a large, the large lot behind, and then there's diagonal parking on the side.
I'm going to say 20 to 20, 20 to 25 spots at Heard Avenue. I'd have to go count. There's a parking lot at the back of our church on Heard.
Does that parking lot meet overflow ever?
Meet overflow?
Right. It, does it...
It serves, no, it serves just fine.
Okay, so you typically have open spaces?
Yes, we always have, yes, there's open spaces. And also, it's Sunday for one hour and also Wednesday, so people... And also, it's Sunday for one hour and also Wednesday, so people do tend to park on the street just for the convenience of the front door at that location.
Uh, in, in our initial conversations with them, the current, currently forty is the congregation, and that's higher holidays and heavier attendance. Um, and most of those come as pairs or as families, so we're not looking for forty parking spaces for forty congregants. Uh, the average, as, as we discussed before, is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty, so the overflow might be three or four cars per Sunday, um, assuming that folks don't take advantage of, uh, public transit or carpooling or walking if they're closer to the building then.
Just on the parking point, um, you're sure it's eighteen?
What's that?
You're sure it's eighteen?
That's what...
I've seen, uh, just in the documents, the packet had a couple different figures. It said fifteen, it said twenty-five.
It's not striped very well right now?
Okay.
And they don't, they don't currently own the building. At one point, at one point, we thought it was twenty spaces. I don't think it is. We've walked it. I know that at DAPR, we also had a discussion, I think, um, I forget who brought this up, that there's currently no barrier between the backside of that parking lot and the alley. And we agreed that that's probably something that needs to be implemented when we get to that stage. So figuring out the drop-off configuration and the maximum number of spots will, it's certainly something we need to do a parking study on the property for.
And I think I'd read mention as well that you were considering, if you get to that point, um, transitioning some of the spaces to provide accessible spaces.
Yes.
So the eighteen is what you believe is current?
We think so, yeah.
Okay.
There are also, and one of the reasons for our uncertainty about this is there are a couple of, uh, medical, mechanical equipment. There's equipment in the, in the parking lot now that will be removed when the lab facilities are taken away.
Gotcha.
Whether we get new spaces or just turn around or handicap spaces, we're unclear at this point. But our goal would be to maximize the parking, uh, but we certainly want to be able to provide a, a usable drop-off area that's adjacent to the, to the accessible entrance in the back.
If we did, did look at this as if it was a new building and there was a new parking requirement for it, uh, the zoning ordinance states that there shall be one parking space for every ten seats in the sanctuary, so they easily comply.
That'd be less than I would thought.
Any other thoughts, questions?
Would you comment on the interaction with the, uh, Art Center, which is right next to it?
Oh. We, we've, we've spoken to John in our preparations about this. The, the improvements to the Art Center and the, the glass walls and the, and the, uh, the inviting nature of the Art Center is also something we think this building lends itself to as a reading room, and with the depth of the, the depth and visibility into the sanctuary is very similar. So I think the, the view that you get when you walk through, uh, through that section of the corridor, the new buildings across the street and the restaurants that are going up there all have a similar feel to them. So, uh, we, we feel that this use and this adaptation of the building is in keeping with the, with what should be happening on the Central Street corridor.
We've, uh, I've not read through every one of the special use standards. I assume you're familiar with them. But, uh, the interaction of the Christian bookstore with the other, uh, properties is going to improve at least a little bit, the commercial, uh, business nature of, of that area. Uh, you've got Ryan Stadium and, uh, other uses to the, uh, to the east that aren't, uh, that aren't retail uses, and, uh, the Medical Center isn't, uh, generating any retail traffic, so there'll be a slight improvement there. Um, uh, obviously will not diminish the value of other properties in the neighborhood because the, the building isn't changing. There's nothing historical or architectural, uh, about the building or, or natural or environmental fe- features that complies with all other applicable regulations. Uh, if you've had a chance to read our application, in addition to being an overlay zoning district, it's also an overlay legal district because there are special considerations, uh, for religious assemblies that apply. Those are set out, uh, in the brief, so we would ask you to make this recommendation, uh, of approval of a special, a special use, uh, subject to the working out of the particular. You said you need to come back on the parking?
So it'll be, we'll get to DAPR once we finalize our decision.
So if you could make the recommendation to the City Council, if you would approve this, uh, as a recommendation, uh, that's what we're asking for, subject to whatever parking, uh, confirmation needs to be made by staff that this is in compliance. I think, I think the issue isn't fixed seating. It's, it may be square footage because the, uh, the, the seating may or may not be fixed, so that will have to be finalized and approved. But in either, in any event, I don't see it as, as a major problem. We would like to secure this contract and nail this down so we can move ahead and sell the other two buildings, which may provide, uh, more retail or more tax, real estate tax revenue, depending on who the buyers are. So that's, that's our request.
Anyone else like to speak, or?
I don't think you were here when we swore everybody else in. Can I swear you in? Um, do you swear and affirm that testimony you will provide in connection with this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, state your name and address.
My name is John Weinberger. I live at Seventeen Twenty-Two Chancellor Street. I have no objection, one comment to the project. Um, Chancellor Street is parallel to Central. It's one, one street to the north. Our, our garage and our backyard is on the alley along Central Street where the, where the parking will be. On, uh, Northwestern Football Saturdays, we are besieged by, uh, tailgate parties in the, uh, in the Art Center parking lot and, uh, and also the, the medical building, that's the subject here, uh, parking lot. And, uh, it's really a nuisance for the, for the Chancellor Street neighbors, and I would, uh, besiege the, uh, the, the church, uh, not to allow tailgating in the parking lot. Um, you know, I, I think an, an alternative would be to allow, if you, if you, if you have open spaces on Saturday that you want to rent out to football fans, please just rent them out for parking. It makes the, it, it makes things much more peaceful for, uh, for the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, with that, we're gonna close the record. Thoughts, please?
Well, I think that since we're just, um, going to be voting on...
Mary, um, we're gonna reopen for one second.
Hang on. I just wanna, um, see if the applicant has any comments or concerns about if there is a limitation to tailgating, um, on the property and/or renting out parking for new games? Because it, it has been an issue at some other locations.
We have, we have no objections or limitations, I tell you.
Okay.
Thank you. We're gonna close the record again. Sorry, Mary.
Uh, so I, I, um, obviously, in terms of the modifications to the building, they'll have to go through DAPR and come back for that. We're just concerned with the special use. And it seems to me that this is a good location for this. They already have a reading room on Central Street, so this will just be replacing the one that they have there and combining their facilities, which seems to me, uh, to be, uh, a good use for this location.
Next.
Yeah, it seems like all of the standards are met for this, and I have no obje- no objections.
I have no objections too. I would advise the architect, think a little bit what will happen with the storefront after four o'clock. We usually recommend that you have some nice lights or all these things, so that this is life after business hours. We usually recommend this.
I agree. I, I see no reason why the standards haven't been met in this case.
And I agree with my colleagues. Um, it's basically just changing the use from a medical building to now a religious With that, can I get a, oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna have to read the standards. Let me find them again. Sorry. Um, for the ZBA to recommend, uh, that City Council grant a special use, the ZBA must find a proposed special use. A is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies. The standard has been met. Religious institution is a listed special active ground floor use, um, for the B1A sub-areas of the Central Street Corridor Overlay District. B, it complies with the purposes and the policies of the Comprehensive General Plan and the zoning ordinance. The standard has been met. The use is compliant with the zoning ordinance and the Comprehensive General Plan as the project promotes growth and adaptive use of existing commercial structures. C, does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with existing special uses or as a category of land use. The standard has been met. The proposal is complementary to nearby commercial and residential uses, and the proposal will allow the applicant to vacate and duplicate space at Nineteen Thirty-Six Central Street, eliminating the potential for a negative cumulative effect. D, does not interfere with, with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. The standard has been met. The proposed use will occupy an otherwise vacant building and provide significant facade alterations intended to activate the pedestrian frontage along Central Street. E, it is adequately served by public facilities and services. This standard has been met. The building is served by adequate sidewalk streets in close proximity to the, to public transportation. F, does not cause undue traffic congestion. The standard has been met. The subject property is served by a large alley accessible parking lot and nearby public transportation options, which are more than suitable for the limited program offering and attendance estimates proposed for the use. G, preserves significant historical and architectural resources, is not applicable. And H, the, it preserves significant natural and environmental resources, and that's also, um, not applicable. Um, and I complies with all other applicable regulations. The standard has been met. The project complies with all other applicable regulations to move forward with the next steps in the special use process. Can I get a motion?
I will, um, move that we recommend, do we want to include hours of operation in this recommendation? Or no? I, I don't know what the hours of operation are for the other businesses along Central.
I think for a religious institution, I wouldn't, just because there could be some accessory uses that, that differ.
Okay.
But perhaps a condition about the tailgating?
Okay. Uh, so I, uh, move that we recommend approval of the, uh, project at Seventeen Thirteen Central Street, uh, Nineteen CM JV dash zero one zero one, uh, to the City Council with the condition that the applicants prohibit tailgating, uh, on, in the parking lot during, uh, special events at Northwestern University, and, um, uh, and that's it.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And with that, we, um, go to City Council.
One clarification, though. The, the prohibition of tailgating makes good sense, but can we be clear in the minutes that that doesn't prohibit them if they should choose to rent spaces as was suggested by the speaker?
I, I would modify that recommendation.
Sure.
Uh, that, that we move that, that they, the recommendation for approval is subject to the church's agreeing to not allow tailgating, notwithstanding that they might elect to rent the parking spaces in the lot for special events at Northwestern, that they would prohibit those parkers from tailgating in that lot.
With a signage or something to that effect.
We did.
Can we have a revote real quick, just since we modified that condition a little bit?
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? With that, you're off to City Council.
Staff will be in touch about, uh, when your next steps are.
Um, in the matter of Twenty-Five Ten Green Bay Road, Melissa?
Jason Victor, applicant, submits for a special use for indoor commercial recreation for Born to Win in the B1A Business District, zoning code section six nine five two, and the OCSC Central Street Corridor Overlay District, zoning code section six fifteen thirteen seven five. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case.
Please state your, uh, um, excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me? Can you please, if you're done, please step out. Uh, please state your name and address.
Good evening. Um, my name is Charles Happ. Uh, I am the owner of Twenty-Five Ten Green Bay Road, and if I thought for one minute that your vote was gonna be favorably influenced by pictures of my grandchildren, I could've kept you here all night. However, uh, these gentlemen, you've worked all day today, and these gentlemen opened their gym at five AM, so I'll get right to it. I brought with me tonight two owners of Born to Win Fitness, Jason Victor and LT. Uh, they opened the gym at five AM, so I'll make my presentation quick. Uh, we are currently, uh, the concept is an integrative workout. Uh, we integrate boxing with cardio, weight training, martial arts and self-defense, all for a goal of, of mental well-being. We currently are operating on one-to-one training at the facility at Twenty-Five Ten, uh, which we built out as a gymnasium. Uh, we, uh, go with a program of about forty minutes long for exercise program. The goal here this evening is to meet a growing demand and to grow the business, uh, which is the business I'm in, uh, to accommodate groups of four to six people, uh, to expand the, uh, the training and the workout, uh, that these gentlemen perform. We have certified, experienced trainers in all these arts. When I purchased Twenty-Five Ten several months ago, it was one of eight vacant buildings in, within a half-mile radius going up Green Bay Road and Central. And so our goal is to, uh, bring some, um, economic life to the neighborhood. Uh, I have owned buildings in all three major business districts in Evanston for over forty-five years. So I am acutely aware that this is more of a parking committee than it is a zoning committee, uh, and we're prepared to, um, answer any questions that you have regarding parking. But to that end, myself, I was a bit proactive. I purchased the building in Twenty-Sixteen Central Street, uh, which were, from, which I bought, uh, Four Finch's. I don't know if any of you know Peggy at Four Finch's. She was operating out of an alley on Dumpster, Dumpster Street, uh, off Dumpster Street, and I brought Peggy up to, um, to Central Street, which the neighbors are very thrilled about. Uh, the point here being is that there are thirteen additional parking spaces behind Twenty-Sixteen Central, in addition to the ten, uh, that I have in front of Twenty-Five Ten Green Bay Road. Uh, Mr. Fell pointed out that there's ample parking on Harrison, and, uh, we know that there's ample parking on Lincoln to the south. So I believe that, um, and, and these gentlemen also believe that, uh, the parking for clients to make it easier to come in, uh, that they have ample parking in order to grow the business. I would also say that Ms. Nyden, at the, um, design... to make it easier to come in, that they have ample parking in order to grow the business. I would also say that Ms. Nyden at the design review pointed out that most people work out at a facility which is a close distance proximity to their, where they live or where they work. The bulk of our clients that come in for exercise and workout and training, actually I'll walk there for the most part anyway, living within that half-mile radius, Central, Central Street and, and west of Green Bay. The last thing I would say is that we've been in operation for three months. Even though I'm operating under two building permits to expand offices in the, in the area, we have experienced no parking problems. I personally am the building receptionist and parking monitor. And so we see to it that there's ample parking for our clients to come in. We are here to answer any questions that you might have, either regarding the business or about parking. And I would presume that if Mr. Minchev was able to walk 2008 Harrison today, you'd probably stop by 2510 Green Bay Road, so I welcome your thoughts.
I drove by. I didn't walk, but I know this building very well.
What, what questions can I respond to for you?
How many employees are part of these, this facility?
Currently, four.
And where do they park?
They'll park on either Lincoln or, well, starting at five o'clock, there isn't really a whole demand for parking, so the early trainers that get there like LT will park at, actually in front of the building. So the, they're open from, I should probably point this out to you, but the gym is open at 5:00 AM and runs generally to about one or two. After that, the last time I was in front of your committee was for a special use permit for Lock Chicago, which is the other anchor tenant in the building. They start at 5:00 PM and they're actually operating right now and no, no unnecessary demands on the parking there, so.
No, the, the reason that I'm asking is because we, we usually recommend that the employees not park on the street. So if there's off-street parking for any of your employees, that is highly valuable to us.
Sure, that's where 2016 Central would, there are 13 spaces there.
Okay. So your employees will be parking in those spaces?
Just like I do, right.
Okay. And then what are your hours of operation?
5:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
To 1:00 PM?
Yes.
Any other late hours, special events or anything like that?
No special events that are planned, no. But they may come in by appointment after that, but those are the general hours that they're open.
Okay. Anybody else?
Is this, is this the only use of the building or you continue to use it with other tenants?
There are other tenants that are within the building, yes.
Are they offices?
Go through, I could go through in a horseshoe. So ShapeLog is a probably company that some of you are familiar with. They're, they have a display area for the product that they sell going around. Then I have four tenants that came with me from 820 Davis Street that have been tenants of mine between 10 and 15 years. Jonathan Booth lives on Orington. Most of them are northeast or northwest Evanston. Jonathan Booth walks to work. Tim Lavengood, who's the executive director of the Technology Innovation Center, rides his bike every day. Matt Struvey lives on Orington and northeast Evanston and walks to work. And who am I missing? Oh, Rob Topping, he's the hedge fund guy. Yeah, he, he lives in northwest Evanston too and walks.
So the, this use will be mainly in the center?
Yes.
I mean, the empty space plus?
Oh, the, the gym is in the north, do you see that up, yeah, where it circled right there? They're in the back, 2,000 square feet.
In the back, in the top left corner. And what is the, in the center? I mean, this whole empty space.
It's kind of a breakout sex, we have reception area, shared reception area, sofa, you can update your Instagram account, which is what they do now, so that's generally it. It's a shared reception area, especially for Lock Chicago, who will kind of debrief their clients and then meet with them on instructions, things like that. It's wide open.
So in your experience, because you're actually currently expanding, let's say, this?
Right, yes.
In your experience-
It's pretty well determined right now what the composition's going to be.
Yeah. In your experience, you didn't have a ten-time parking issue? I'm sorry to ask always about parking, but it's one of the main things that you'll be asked-
Of course.
-for special use. So for now, no problem.
With the anchor, the two anchor tenants that are going to be the most demanding on the parking are 5:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
Okay.
I'm covered.
Yeah. So I have only a friendly note to you. Can I do it? I always do it. Can you make this sketch better?
I got architectural drawings, which is probably, at the time I applied, I think this is what I had, so.
Yeah. Because I'm asking all these questions because it was not readable. That's why I'm asking all these things. And, excuse me for being picky, but a good drawing speaks much for itself.
A better drawing.
A better drawing. Thank you.
Certainly. I can provide that to Ms. Claus, sure.
I have a question. Can you explain what is the, what is the purpose of the, the condition that the DAPR recommended for the one year, for the one year review?
I think my, I believe that I understood that they want to go back in a year to see if there were any unusual demands on the parking. And I, because I told them, I'm bounded by Stuart Rogers Photography Studio on the south and the FedEx Building on the, on the, on the north. And the biggest violators of my parking lot there at 2510 are the people who duck in for a 10-minute photo session and a 20-minute FedEx session. So I'm constantly diverting traffic. So I did, I explained to them that we'll be monitoring the traffic, but I certainly didn't want to be penalized for the success of the gym by the fact that other merchants are using my parking lot.
So in the DAPR minutes, they, they wanted the, they wanted approval conditioned, their recommendation to our committee was that the approval be conditioned on this one-year reevaluation. What, what lease term do you have with the gym now?
What, I'm sorry?
What's the lease term?
The lease term for, is three years.
Three years.
Right.
So if, if DAPR came back in a year and said, this is creating quite a disruption here, what would you do?
I'd have attorney and argue it. How are they going to determine that? That's what anybody would do, right? To be honest.
So, so can I ask city staff here, is, we don't have to include that condition?
You, you do not have to inclu- have to include that condition. I think the, the point of DAPR was, for instance, what if there's loud music that is bothering the surrounding residences that are across the alley? Or what if there is a significant parking issue? And those are things that then could be readdressed by heading back to DAPR. I don't think we're particularly looking to try to kick a business out. It's just how do we mitigate any impacts on adjacent properties? So if that were to occur, you would either need to be willing to make those changes or end the lease with the tenants.
That captures the essence of the conversation.
Right. No, I understand, but it's, as you say, the business is expanding and so, you know, they, it, it's really hard to know what the impact will be on the community entirely.
Because it's not being monitored any fashion right now in any business district in the city. I agree. But I was getting nodding heads and I figured I'd go along with what they wanted to do.
Right.
We'll, we're going to be reevaluated, everything in a year anyway. We do that as a general rule.
Exactly, exactly. So it's just not.
I just wanted to make it clear that I didn't want to, I didn't want to accept, I was questioning how it was going to be monitored because I didn't want to be penalized for the businesses around me that are clearly using my parking lot.
Sure. No, I, I don't think that that would be fair, but just overall, for example, the music issue or some such thing. It's, it wouldn't be hurtful if everything's in order for them to do a re-evaluation. It just makes it easier for us to accept that recommendation.
That'd be fine.
Can I ask how long you've been operating in this location?
Three months.
Three months? And are you changing your physical usage of the space or you're changing your programming within your space?
What do you mean by physical usage?
Like you're not expanding this amount of space within the building, that you're not expanding your square there? Okay. And when you do, as I understand it, you do like more of a one-on-one training now and you're proposing to expand to more of a small group training. So when you do one-on-one training, things like Muffy's point about the music, do you, are you using music now? So, I mean, what kind of changes should we expect as you evolve to this small group training?
Okay, if I could address that. So the, where the closets are like, and the, this would be the east end of the gym, there's a, the middle section is a garage door. And so then the gym is surrounded by actual adults who are in a working office atmosphere. So we're conscientious of the music, but the point is, i- if anybody's ever been in the building, it, it is totally soundproof with the garage door down. And so, and we're obviously sensitive, the other tenants in the building who are there working on a daily basis, running a business are conscientious, well, I, I think that, I think we've had it long enough to know in three months that they're not bothered by the music.
Comments?
I didn't feel it was necessary to read the application that I filled out and you read, so like the other people did, so I'm going to get you out of here by 9:30.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you're doing here too.
Anything else you want to summarize or?
Pardon?
Do you need to summarize anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to close the record. And thoughts, please?
I think it's fine, especially if they have a reevaluation, you know, slated, if that, if that were to become necessary, which it probably won't based on the testimony that you've given us, but all the same, it seems like a reasonable continuation.
I'm happy with the plan as well. I don't really understand the, how the reevaluation a year from now will be very practical once things are already set up, but, as it is.
I have no objection.
Yeah, I don't have an objection either. I think my, my only concerns are about the music and I think less so about your other tenants in the space because you, as the property owner, will, you know, moderate that and want to make the best use of your tenant mix. I'm thinking more of the neighbors directly to the rear of your property across the alley line. So I also would be in support for the reevaluation in one year.
The neighbors to the rear of the building, many of whom are members and clients.
Okay.
And tenants, actually.
Good.
And I have no objection. I think this is a fine project.
Thank you.
Can I, oh, let me read the standards. For the ZBA to recommend that City Council grant a special use, the ZBA must find that the proposed special use, A is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies. The standard has been met. Commercial indoor recreation facilities are allowed under the special use section for the B1A Business District. B complies with the purposes and the policies of the Comprehensive General Plan and zoning ordinance. The standard has been met. The uses, the use is compliant with the zoning ordinance and the Comprehensive General Plan because the project promotes growth and adaptive use of existing commercial structures. C does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with existing special uses or as a category of land use. The standard has been met. The proposed commercial indoor recreation facility is complementary to nearby commercial uses and peak hours are not anticipated to overlap with nearby special uses. D does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. The standard has been met. The proposed business will occupy an otherwise vacant portion of an existing commercial space. The proposed use will not generate an abundance of noise as the space is completely enclosed. E is adequately served by public facilities and services. The standard has been met. The building is served by adequate sidewalks, streets in close proximity to public transportation. F does not cause undue traffic congestion. The standard has been met. The proposed use for, the proposed use will not generate parking and traffic issues due to non-overlapping peak hours of operation during weekdays. Abundant weekend parking is proximate, in proximate commuter lots and nearby public transportation options. G, significant historical and architectural resources is not applicable. Preserve significant natural and environmental resources, that's also not applicable. And I complies with all other applicable regulations. The standard has been met. The project complies with all other applicable regulations to move forward with the next steps in the special use process. With that, can I get a motion?
I've never made a motion before, so I may need some help. So I move that we approve case number ZBA 19ZMJV-0100 located at 2510 Green Bay Road for a special use permit. I have to, I don't have to do the conditions again.
Slight modification, it's a recommendation for approval.
Excuse me, recommendation for approval to City Council. We have one condition, that the special use permit be reevaluated by DAPR, one year from the date of action by City Council.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And with that, you get your recommendation to City Council.
Thank you very much. Thanks for helping the company and thank you for reading the material. I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
With that, thank you guys. I know that was a full agenda, it was a lot to do. Special thanks to our new member, Max. If everyone hasn't met him or said hi, say hi.
Hello.
And also to Cade down there. Cade is not typically at ZBA, he's a staff member, but he does most of the legwork for the packet.
Yeah, he usually calls me to find out if I'm coming in.
And let's see, our regularly scheduled meeting for December 17th is canceled, so this was our last meeting of the year. We will likely have three cases for January 21st and we are meeting in G300. We'll send out a reminder for that. But everybody have a great holiday season and we will see you next year.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Goodbye.